Next time, now six thirty, call me in order. Please advise, meeting is being recorded and will be available to public later today. First of all, this is the previous meeting on public twenty-third. I repeat, the A poll comment? The first one of the last time.
Yeah.
We have been awarded six hundred dollars by a member of this school board who would like to remain anonymous. The intent of the six hundred dollar gift will be dedicated to the Frederick Katzen players which are drawn to the department. They're in the midst of preparing for opening curtain and this money will surely go towards some established need for the program. So I'm very excited to do this.
First of all? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll do this for sure.
What's up?
I want to say thank you. You want to say thank you?
Okay, there you are.
Um, yeah, you said that located this in a writing name or something in particular that you think should...
It will likely go towards costuming or set pieces, things like that.
No.
Okay.
Um.
There's our request for chat, we're going to leave and if you'd like to talk about this, excuse me, or have any questions, we can do that in non-public. If you're ready to act on it, you can do it.
That's a point.
Much to your favor.
Sure. Uh, okay. Okay, please, school safety.
Hi.
How are you?
So I quickly checked out some things that I've been working on through the middle of the school year. I'd like to share that with the board.
That's awesome.
So like many things, starting a position and having a big eye and thinking of all the things that I wanted to get done. Um, just kind of taking a step back with just getting to know the buildings a little bit. Looking at our computers, looking at what's within each building and talking a little bit about how we can improve them, speaking them a little bit. Coming back and making adjustments and then trying them again. Um, coming up with different things that the administration and the facilities director can utilize throughout the school year. Creating an operation map that has a school plan, talking about where all the electrical panels are, the water, the main shop, transformers, things like that. So that we get to know the buildings a little bit better across the local district. Um, so that emergency personnel can look at it a little bit more. We've created a camera map. Um, we've begun backstage and looking at reunification process, which is difficult to do, given the different population, the ages, the different school needs, um, and the number of traffic we anticipate during those. So, um, we're talking about reunification within just the school and then if we got a reunification outside, how would we address that within, you know, us going to another school? For example, if there was some PPA or we had to go to a different location like Great Capital Church, how could we plan that effectively? Um, using the emergency personnel part of that. We are also looking into really an active shooter training for emergency personnel. So we have Jane Hubbard, a specialist, she's coming to support us in that process. It takes a great deal of time to get that started. We have to have big, small exercises and things like that. Um, it's more for the emergency personnel and then we can support our employees who can utilize our school during school break or during the vacation, something like that. But we're just starting those conversations now and then looking in the future, how we can incorporate that with students or more training of that. So these are just some of the things that I've been working on and as the school year continues to unfold, we're adding more, including that in planning and adding staff to teachers and then doing more training with that.
Question, right?
Thank you very much. How many of the camera maps is there not familiar with at present?
So the camera map, we have cameras throughout the building. Um, so sometimes we use our cameras to go back and look at footage of maybe an incident that took place with children or something were to happen and we needed support from emergency personnel. We can identify or locate a map and then refer the camera map to the emergency personnel and they can find that camera as well. So it's trying to find it in common language and...
So it's more where the cameras are and where everything is put.
Yeah.
Got you, thank you.
Can you help the change with the combining of cameras and boards?
Um, with everything that I'm doing this year, I have the anticipation of the two buildings merging. So I'm trying to be really thoughtful in things that we're doing, anticipating the modular as well. Um, one of the things that Josh and I have been talking about is renumbering this whole school. There seems to be some discrepancy within the buildings and it's just kind of like a historical thing of just how classrooms are numbered, wings are numbered, additions have been put on. Um, and trying to try to get the building more cohesive. PA is a much larger scale and that would be much more expensive to change the numbers right now, but trying to use elementary and river schools to be a little bit more compatible with each other so that emergency personnel can come in and stay connected where rooms are and kind of that there's some kind of formula that we're using. Um, so Hill School, we feel pretty comfortable, we're going to continue enough about working, going to meet with the chief of police and the fire department to make sure that um, they're comfortable with the number changes as well and then moving forward with our administrators and hopefully getting that with the anticipation if we were ever to build on that the number and system that we use could be really close in that.
Thank you.
I was just looking at the reunification to start. Moving, we have to transport students, how quickly can both companies respond? One hour? You're taking a lot of, lot of work on here.
There's a lot of stuff...
Do you have people helping you?
I, Josh a lot. We meet a lot and the administrators, they're gracious and I spent a lot of time with PA and we talked and a lot of it is reflective work and trying to make it so that we're not trying to critique how we do procedures, but helping make them more effective and more timely process, especially PA is a much larger scale and the population is much different, helping make it better and then the workload and our response time for the administrators is less. Um, because it can be quite difficult to try to keep track of all those kids. So we're still trying to finalize, but we'll continue to work on it.
You still, anything you need to teach more, can you help you get to which, you know, to where you're comfortable, have a, have a good time, question, you know, your engagement that we can help you achieve?
Right now for me, I feel like it's a lot of research and trying to understand the debate or picture. Um, there's a lot of things coming in from the state, the Department of Ed. I have the book that the community has sent out, so trying to look at that and trying to be forward-thinking and able to make some changes that might be coming down. So for right now, I think I'm feeling pretty comfortable just getting to know the building and the teachers and then I'm planning to be with leadership tomorrow. We'll kind of take a look at where we are now and what we look to accomplish within this school year. Um, I feel confident that we can get a lot done this school year, but it's roughly years after this, I feel as though it's a lot of keeping track of things, keeping our thoughts on things, keeping it to date with the rest of the time.
No one? Listen, thank you. You're welcome to thank you, you don't have to thank. I can imagine. We have three other points for me, the question. I think, has anyone heard from you, the things you changed in your budget?
Um, sure, well, we can start with...
Or you want to...
Start with the bullet and that maybe can...
Stop what?
Let Mr. Ben would be his thing.
Stop what?
All right, um...
These whole items were asked for by the board the last time in that, sorry, I can't remember.
Okay.
Fair enough. So, Mr. Zina?
Yes.
I think Tom asked a whole bunch of things. I mean, the question was that Tom had asked him that, we're looking to corporate activities and find out the ones that are doing as well as we kind of expected to be doing. Have location, have never met expectations, that type of overview. I know it's kind of based around the idea that varsity spirit has been added to the budget.
Well, I don't know if this will make any difference, but when looking at the number, I think the number, you know, from last year to this year, well, for the proposed this year is probably what's leading a lot to this too as well. And if we go back to the regular, what happened was the new stipends, well, the stipends for this coming year, we put back to the original salary that we had before the budget cuts last year, so that's it. So if you put it to what we were, what we're paying our coaches and advisors this year for next year, the difference is only thirty-four hundred dollars. So the number would be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and things cents for co-curriculars for TRS, Hill, PA for next year if we don't put the salaries back to what we had before the cut. That's the biggest one.
So this budget currently reflects rolling back, considering the...
Yes.
We cut everyone by five.
By yourself last year and we're rolling those back.
Yeah, so, so this year then the, yeah, the proposal then if we just keep it at those same ones that we got now, it would be, like I said, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And this year we're paying two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So roughly about thirty-four hundred dollars would be the increase that we're looking for with adding some new things as well too. We restructured some things within the co-curricular, not just varsity spirit that got added. We're looking to re-add in ski advisor, a second ski advisor because of safety issues and things like that. Uh, we also had to put in another assistant position for the fall spirit because every other varsity has an assistant and once again, it's a safety thing and, you know, competition thing while moving hard and stuff. It's getting out of second set of eyes. Restructured drama a little bit with the assistants pays, we moved those around, moved the head of drama up a little bit. Because the way it was, we had two assistant drama positions, one for the fall, one for the strength. If the same person did it, they'd make more than what the head of the drama would make. So I, I felt that was a little unfair, so I restructured some things. So all in all, it's only, like I said, a thirty-four hundred dollar increase for this, for coming.
Got any questions?
Excellent.
But I also got those other numbers of other groups that we have within the school too and, you know...
Spirit specifically, do we get a breakdown, I know that we got a breakdown for the advisors' cost last time. Did you get a breakdown of what the actual program itself costs?
Uh, yes, I had it in my office.
We'll let you finish then I'll...
Okay.
All right.
Um, curiosity, I mentioned a couple of in-division and around safety. Do we require any of these coaches who are designated for safety to have any kind of representation, LA, anything like that?
All coaches are required to be CPR and first aid certified, as well as they take an online concussion course every other year to learn about the symptoms and procedures when you run into a concussion. Um, there's also a heat illness course that they all have to take every other year as well too. Um, doesn't seem much winter, but they're all required to take that, um, as well as, you know, they know the procedures for contacting Nate. Nate, Nate started training on that, I thought, training if you guys didn't know that, they know the procedures. Oh, plus there's a coaching class they all have to take that talks about things. So there's a lot of, you know, learning going on.
And then to the assistant coaching as well as the...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I can make a point, it's not necessarily true that it's not, it's not...
What do you mean by that?
We're not government any time, so we're not part of that requirement?
All those requirements that I was talking about are NHIA requirements that we have to be under, for our coaches to be eligible.
Bet.
Shouldn't our middle school coaches make the same criteria? I mean, they're coaching kids and safety at the high school level, I would assume that level of safety is just as important as at middle school level. So, well, can we as a board require that for our middle school children?
Well, there are certain loopholes if you want to speak out.
No, please.
There are certain loopholes that you can get away with, certain things, because according to the NHIA bylaws, a coach has from a year of being hired to accomplish some of those things that I've talked about. CPR and first aid is supposed to be asked, but it takes, they, they got up to a year to get that. So a lot of times too, and I, this is talking about a middle school AB that I know that also did a high school, is that the coach turnover happens so quickly at the middle school that by the time you try to get that coach involved with all this stuff, they've already moved on and you get another coach and then you get the whole other year of waiting type of thing before you get all that.
What about concussion protocol?
The concussion protocol, please? Um, no, that's done right away. They can do that online, that's a free course by the...
There's no requirement that we do that, you know?
The data that indicates that folks who suffer from CT are starting off with concussions at a very young age, it kind of seems to me a way that that's something that we should maybe consider, maybe tonight obviously with the budget, but I think that...
Usually by things like that, this is how we do it.
This was not what I...
Well, I, I just wanted to be transparent and I just, you know...
And I appreciate it, but I mean...
There is a quick solution to that. The concussion course is online, it's done by the NFHS. People just have to log in, it's about a half hour tops and they're done. They can be certified and that. And basically, it's just the warning site that everyone has been provided with throughout now, you know, when you see a concussion, immediately pull them from activity. You know, there's no trainer there, make sure that they go see the proper people. What we're finding now, especially even at the high school level, which is great having a trainer on staff though, is sometimes a lot of parents will just bring their child to a PCP. The PCP person will say, oh, we have a concussion. Well, a concussion, it takes on many different realms, many different things. There should be some sort of concussion plan too about what a child can do or, you know, coming back to school, what they should be aware of. Because a lot of times parents, you know, or people will utilize a concussion to get out of doing things. But yet, you know, I, I can't go to practice because I hear concussion, but the school dance with the black light and music playing, okay? They're, they're more than welcome to go to that and the parents can't understand why, you know?
We're not going to get sued for black lights and dancing, we're going to get sued for a concussion that maybe somebody received in the seventh grade and starts manifesting itself later. We have, we have protocols in place to protect the students and the community, I think that's something worth exploring.
But I can rest, you can rest assured that any child that gets trauma to the head, it takes care of it. It's, it's kind of, play a stop, that child is not going to go back in and, you know, apply anything to your dog, it can be, and so it's handled, but there's no...
But there's a lot of protocol that we have throughout the district, I think, that may be more concerned. And I don't certainly mean to extend the congregation, but if we can...
Concussion protocol, if you're just...
Please, thank you.
We should also look to extend to each other more too. If you really want to be proactive, I, I can teach it.
No, no, well, everybody, I'm saying that if I can teach it, nonetheless, they have to be a college.
Well, I mean, concussion protocol for coaches and concussion protocol for teachers, I think are really different. That taught for thirty-five years, never had that problem, but I know my daughter plays the old air at Hamburg Academy because I'm pretty mad that concussion...
Well, I'll tell you, most of our concussions don't happen on the field that we get reported to the nurse. No, 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 I mean, not sports related or within our sports. The nurse gets tons of concussions, the kids have any, whether it be at home, some other place, you know, where they're doing sports and stuff, so...
Does the NHIA require that for the coaching?
Nate, our trainer, is very good with the whole concussion procedure and stuff. We, we very rarely have kids that have continued concussion problems.
Other questions? Do you have, I'm trying to play Tom, I know this is really Tom's name. Do you have a list of programs that currently underserved?
Well, I, I've got numbers, I don't know what you mean by underserved. I, I mean, do the numbers help with underserved or what they actually do, what they bring to the school community, the opportunities they provide, I mean...
Do you have, you have programs currently running that have low participation and they have high costs?
Newburg? Newburg's got five people, but Newburg's an essential part of the school. I mean, there's a lot of cost that go with that.
Understood.
Media Club right now has got five participants. Obviously, they're taking on the ground or overhauling that, but there's some costs involved in that and not necessarily for, you know, those five, getting stuff updated and stuff like that, so... But that's another one that's going to be essential for the school once we get that to that next level, but they've got revamped and stuff and we're getting it out there, making sure it's done right. Um, Future Farmers of America had four, but that's currently not running, but they have been participating in stated competitions. They've actually been winning awards for the school as well too, so, I mean, the, you know, that line where you're talking about underserved, you know, I mean...
Well, let's take Future Farmers of America for instance. What's the cost of buying the Future Farmers of America?
Uh, the cost is one advisor and the rest they pretty much take care of themselves.
So what's the cost per student?
The cost per student would be that the school incurs, probably about two hundred and fifty bucks.
So what you say?
The sport with the brown, long ball and white lady.
Thank you. What's the cost per student?
Football, six hundred and fifty.
So from my standpoint, I guess as a board member and resident, Future Farmers of America is bucks. I mean, you're not going to shove the money out and do it, you get awards, four kids get served, football, we're getting a football team that's underperformed for many, many years, we've had this conversation, there's competition to tell me to pitch it off, so how would we weigh that? I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't get it.
Well, what about Alpine skiing then? Because that's nine hundred and five dollars a student. Uh, boys' basketball, seven hundred and forty-two dollars a student. Girls' basketball, seven hundred and thirteen. Boys' tennis, five hundred and thirty-nine. Baseball, five hundred and twenty-two. Girls' lacrosse, four hundred and eighty-three. Winter spirit, four hundred and twenty-nine. Boys' lacrosse, four hundred and twenty-five. The lowest across country are about three hundred and fifty.
Have you ever, remember Tom's question for, if you could provide that question?
And of course, too, take into account too, I've broken these down as well too, but these also, I've put in transportation costs as well as this and our general equipment costs. It's pretty much the same for almost every sport, but that's just the way it works. You know, you're not buying a lot of equipment every year for the same sport, you know, so you keep it just one thing, make the numbers work a little bit.
Well, yeah, I think that numbers, it was Tom's habit when he tried to...
Question, is it possible for us to generate, you know, make to the thing, is it possible for us to generate the percentage of the co-curricular budget and its portion in comparison to the total version? And what I'm going with is, is what we, co-curricular, I believe it'd be co-curricular provided, and that's what we have for our kids, regardless of the cost.
Yep.
And I think it can handle Hamburg Academy. I suspect that the cost of co-curricular for all of the students that serve, if you look at it that way, total cost of the co-curricular budget and on a person, the number of students that serve, that dollar amount is probably much lower than some of the small little hundreds that's been given. It's, I think, a real benefit, I think, of the small percentage of our total budget.
I think this conversation spun out, anyway, here last night.
I wasn't here and I apologize, but I had to get my...
Request was addressed, spirit.
Uh-huh, I was here for that conversation.
Okay. Varsity spirit, PA.
In the fall.
Right, and whether or not that was something we wanted to do, some kind of budgeting to prepare to, fitting where we just came from last year. If that is something we want to take in before these other things, this is kind of where that conversation spun out and if, if we do want to do spirit or something else that turns in the budget that maybe isn't binding the level of service the students we expect.
Are you aware that they want to be paying more?
I do, I am. Sure, they want it.
Now, if I understand it, then, then maybe I'm wrong here, but it sounds like, I would be on our life director's thing, that the cost in the increase, thirty-four hundred dollars. But is it also true that there are two positions that have been added within that thirty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, so technically, there's an increase of thirty-four hundred dollars, we've added two positions and...
We've also combined others, in-house or in there, I mean, but...
That's a good job, the C goes, that's a good job, adding, adding services, there's no extra cost.
Managing my...
Extra cost, yep. We did rearrange our, I thought, a little while ago, I thought we had a fault for that. I think that's included in that.
And that's included within that, so it sounds like...
Yeah, if you, I broke down the numbers even more. Um, out of, Hamburg's portion of the, with the two new positions and stuff like... Um, out of that, Hamburg's portion of the, with the two new positions and stuff like that, from this year to propose for next year would then be only a, about eight hundred dollar increase. On just the PA line of co-curriculars.
Yeah, okay?
Yes.
That's something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was just over, you know? Josh?
Next, the next bullet was about village merger update.
Sorry, I'm standing up. Yeah, I was aware. Um, so update on the merger is we're working on getting the modular contract in so we can sign that and be good to go on that end. Um, we currently have a tour of the village school lined up with the committee, um, for Wednesday. Um, and I gave some cost savings to Patty this afternoon.
Okay, so. Uh, Paul's gonna find it?
Yeah, I can.
Is this our second meeting? I'm sorry, can I go to the minute?
Yeah, sure.
The second meeting?
I believe so.
Yeah, we, you know, we had our first meeting, uh, week ago Thursday.
And, um, sixty-seven folks were there. We had, we had a big discussion. I sent their notes to Patty on our meeting. And one of the things the committee wanted to do was to, um, tour the school because many of them have never, hadn't, hadn't been around for a long time. So Josh graciously volunteered to lead us through the school. We all know he's done this before, so.
Worth the life. I think I can do it with my eyes.
He had his tour guide hat on and take us down to the belly of the beast and, uh, uh, so we're looking forward to that. We have another meeting scheduled on the fifteenth, so we'll continue our deliberations. But, uh, folks from there, I think, found it, um, found it to be successful, the first meeting. Uh, we elected Clint, the chair of the committee, as you said, we invited him voting. The committee elected Clint the chair. We hope to, uh, elect the vice chair and the recording secretary. So I have to keep the notes in here, because I'm not good at that. Uh, so that's where we are. I think we're meeting on, um.
Wednesday.
No, meeting Wednesday, but the, the next committee meeting after that is the fifteenth.
So we have that. Um, I gave some updated savings, um, for this afternoon. And I also, I believe loaded in your document, um, Tom requested the cost per pupil for, um, the village school last meeting. So I did a per pupil for utility bills, um, which I did last year throughout the, the conversation. Um, I did a per pupil for the actuals from sixteen to seventeen, for the actuals from seventeen to eighteen, and for the actual, for the voted on number for eighteen and that.
Questions for Josh? I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, on the last line, track module setup cost, that is the one seventy-five and change it to the budget right now?
Which they are.
Um.
Oh, to be honest with you, I, I didn't go through the bottom of that. I only did the first meeting and that. So those were, um, those were notes from last year that I haven't scanned yet on this year.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to estimate the cost.
Yeah, to move, to move.
To move.
Right.
But there's something that, that actually probably is having trouble getting that, making estimates on like concrete.
So just focus on the first page now.
Yes. Just the actual numbers on that first page. So those road cost savings, um, the lines that I didn't do, um, I didn't do my custodian salaries because of, I don't have the insurance numbers on, and all apples would be benefited to this, that's why I went forward on that. So.
I think if we can get something to bring up for this for all the, all the information on it, so we can kind of bottom line, take it down, it would definitely help.
I can ask something to that, but, um, number forty-two.
And questions, Josh? Did the, you may not have any answers. Did the additional module thing just end up in the budget?
I don't know.
So do you have first module thing in your budget?
I, the first one comes on the down payment. We're working on which line to put it in right now. To get it in the additional.
May not be.
Yeah, I don't think, the chief highlighted in yellow, four, we go to the book data. I don't think like that.
Okay. And a question? What?
The, um, balance, your trust fund has been included, um, I think in your last meeting packet.
Yep.
I know that there was some discussion regarding what you might want to fund with trust funds. Um, and then Josh also, this afternoon, he admitted, um, in the past several years, he has done a floor replacement, camera replacement list for you. He did prepare that, um, to try to get back home, that's like what I asked you. So we can put that on the draft more as I have people type up. And I'm not sure what other decisions you'd like to make, might start a trust fund, maybe put technology as well, I think.
Yeah, we talked about technology, tracker, um, some structural supplies.
In that conversation last meeting, just for a fresh meat, we talked about, we plan on moving that tractor money into a trust fund or into a warrant article, because that is reflective.
We don't have to, we don't need a warrant article for that. We could, tonight if we wanted to, we could both, Josh and Jack.
So do you want that out of the budget? I guess is my question.
I think that's the question earlier on, I think, I decided.
I would want to, do we have any extra, uh, documents?
I'm sorry, everyone.
I. Can you give me some? I can, come on. I think it was like, yeah, thank you. I can have my friend back there.
Do we want Amber or somebody to go through the budget and figure out what they need, if they possibly need funding like that? That helpful?
It would be a little.
That would be a lot. Well, really, right, because you could take, you could really take a lot of the supplies, you could. It would be, you know, identified.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe take our newer items?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you, do you watch, uh, new, um, wireless connection points? You're generous.
We did it last year with an emergency lighting. Um, we took some out of the budget and put it into the trust. And I'm not afraid of work by any means, but it's really been very tough to figure out some of those moves we made. As we're eight months later, um, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Or something like the tractors, they're straightforward.
Very.
One thousand, what does a magic number is?
When these guys are talking, two hundred for that, five hundred for that, a hundred for this. And that's kind of how it played out last year. And that, that's been tough, but you put a solid number in there for one item, two items, very easy to, to keep track.
I'm trying to make it like more than, I'm, I'm afraid of work. But yes, I mean, obviously, that trust then went down last year anyways, and we, we didn't put any in our trust. So there's only so much money there, but if we get checks for what we could possibly move on the trust.
The last.
It's very last thing in the bag.
About the point. That was my idea. October twenty-fourth?
Yep, yeah, that was the last.
Fifteen, fifteen, seven, eighty-eight. I don't have it.
I just probably don't want to be handed out by the squish. Us, yeah, us have a lot of information once we get it out.
So where would be, where, where, where is that, oh, I'm kidding, with the, okay.
Good.
Yeah, David and I shared it. But where, where would be tractor?
Tractor.
Tractor in the budget and the, uh, equipment line for payment.
So we don't have a lot of that.
Well, we got, uh, that's, that's just by the years, it starts with. They do, like, five. A lot of time, I didn't go with it. The message is, you know, it's down here in, uh, twenty-fourteen, four fourteen, we lost track of it. Where, that's, it's too small for me.
Twenty-five.
Four, five hundred, thank you.
So, Carl.
I think that, or can't see it.
Charlie, a question we've asked him, we got a thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand and what do you think, tractor?
Only that's coming up?
Twenty-eight to thirty thousand.
Why we've gone along?
Yeah, different tractors, I.
Wow.
It's different from tractors.
Our, our biggest tractor right now is about eight thousand dollars.
It's, it's.
Yeah. And I don't know which one we bought. I, to be honest, I don't know if it's our bigger or smaller.
Well, I think we replaced them all.
Yeah.
And we did that.
And that was for two thousand.
Just before you started, this would be, I'll do that.
So even that one, that one would probably be about twenty-five, about, twenty, about.
If we do it, that's what we're talking about.
Uneducated, yeah.
We, we, we can do it.
I'm making a motion that.
Right, leave.
No, I just make a motion.
Would you like that early, Josh?
I need, if they know.
Christmas present to you? I love the other ones, I'm actually.
I mean, if we need it.
If Josh's condition doesn't matter, we need it.
Yeah, we need it. And then I make a motion that we withdraw funds from the equipment trust.
Can I reverse, reverse the timing of it? You can't withdraw a room without a public hearing, but you can make a motion for him to purchase it now. And then we'll have a public hearing to withdraw it. You have to post the public hearing in seven days.
But we can buy it before we have a public hearing?
Yeah. You can buy it, and then you have the public.
It's important to.
So you would have the public hearing and say, okay, we bought a tractor. We'd like to hear what you think about us taking the money out of the trust fund to keep it back.
And then if there is a human cry, we have to find you.
Or I'll find you, like, if I do.
Or to bring it back, or don't get it, you don't get it.
Um, but you, and you certainly, you, you have a hearing first. Intake, the public wants to come forward and then hold our, this is a free bar.
I don't think, yeah, I don't risk with the.
Yeah. But I could want you to say, withdraw.
We can authorize, if we purchase a tractor.
Authorize just purchasing a tractor, not to the.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand. Um, for, for, for immediate, for the difference.
Okay. She good?
Pretty great, yeah.
Your team? Sit, you bet.
I, I actually do have a little bit concerned, just if it gets out there and somebody's got the candy to the bunch. If we do go ahead and purchase it first, that's all. Because we see how their heads go, you know, what happens sometimes.
I think, we, we, we need it, we're agents, we're back to the, we're agents of the.
Well, no, I understand that, but if we, you know, next being, what, two weeks? We have the public hearing before that, it's only two weeks, that'll.
But if we need it and something happens, we're going to incur unnecessary expenses, we might not be acting in a responsible way by.
The purpose of the public hearing is really to hear what the public thinks about you withdrawing funds from the trust to keep it. So you're buying the tractor, you're not the first tractor, you're gonna hear.
Right, right. More than the first. Spend it all. That is not going to, you know, make the decision to spend it. You know, explain that in the fire. Everyone good? All in favor?
Aye.
You have a new tractor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now you can take it off the budget.
I will. Have to leave just a couple in there.
Don't forget a list about this, other than the tractor.
Okay.
People agree with that for now? Will be visited next time? Tuck, I'm good. Social worker, that's my request, that my, uh, please get some information about what this, you know, cost, ensuring somebody.
No, but it's in your pocket.
Okay.
Find it.
You hit mine.
Yeah. I thought it was, yeah, that's true.
Is it in the new one or last one?
Look, I got one. It's three forty-six.
Up today?
I don't have today, twenty-five.
That's good.
You know, you don't show up for a meeting and then I get a.
That's the only one.
Thank you.
So Paul, um, just some information gathering, uh, with other school districts that have social workers and, um, I think the majority of them put this position in the public bargaining agreement. So we did as we typically do and funded for, um, master step five with, um, salary and fringe benefits. And if you added that together, the total cost potentially could be eighty-six thousand and seven forty. So that would maybe hire someone with less experience. We may hire someone that doesn't take health insurance, but we try to, because it's a bigger priority. We had had a conversation on the leadership team. Didn't put it in the budget because we talked about, um, waiting until some of the first retirements were submitted and taking a look at what position may be, um, possibly filled by, you know, by the, this is a bigger priority if it works out in the building that it can be enforced somehow, um, maybe not, but we're just kind of waiting to see what we can do.
What's your, your other position, Paul?
I, you know, I spoke about it last meeting. We're seeing in the K twelve, certainly I'm seeing in this building, all corporate levels, significant spike in the number of students experiencing social, emotional, mental health issues, relationship issues, both, you know, interpersonal as well as dating. Just the gamut of needs that go beyond just your typical act and support for our students is substantial. Um, it is taxing our current school output staff. And I, you know, I, I want to address an area of need, not only in my building, but speaking with John and Judy. I think we've all agreed that we see this on the rise in all of our buildings.
I, the idea, this should be shared, the current idea?
Yeah, depending how it, you know, the, the old concern is one isn't enough. I understand. You know, and so, um, you know, just what I, it's not even, you know, it used to be weekly, now it's daily. Uh, the thing that we're dealing with, um, so depending on how that position would be, you know, I think that's a lot of conversation we've had, what, what's it gonna look like? Uh, well, there's no doubt, um, no question in my mind, we need to do something, there's gotta be some kind of support, um, more than what we're beginning with now.
And I think with, I choose love for them, we have a free curriculum in our back pocket that is severely underutilizable in my building because we are hamstrung, um, with how we utilize our advisory model. And, you know, this is the perfect delivery vehicle, a social worker, many can take the curriculum and can spread it throughout the building.
My obvious question is, John, John, you know, if we hire a social worker, whatever it looks like, is this person gonna be crisis manager? Does that mean they have any time for anything other than crisis manager? I'm not saying we don't need him.
Certainly, well, I can tell you that, you know, comes from my building, that's what that is. It's pretty, pretty standard. And it's not, it's not small. Okay. Um, there was a need for a social worker here ten years ago when I was still here. And I'm sure it's always increased. And I, I have no doubt that if we, if we get one, we. I have no doubt that if we, if we get one, we probably would want to look at getting more of that really. But one's a start. I think it's something that we have to do. It would be nice if we could do it without affecting the budget too much, but even if it affects the budget, I think it's a necessary position. This school and that school, you're doing.
We kind of want lines of you just being, obviously, if needed. But again, just one's gonna probably be, like you said, a crisis manager.
No, I'm not, just, you know, just idea.
No, no, I'm not, yeah. I'm not even, but just, you know, it's something that I think any person coming into that position has to understand at that point in time, too, that, you know, you're gonna get hit in the face with a problem every single day or several every single day at several different schools, so.
That's up to me, I, it's up to you to kind of work out what that program's gonna look like.
That's my, that's my concern with it, though, you know, getting the right person for it.
There, there have to be some, some parameters and some kind of law, it's a job description, and some kind of prioritization of the types of kids that you're gonna be. It was just like, just like the same thing with, it's most of our colleges, you can't serve them in the building and, you know, concerts. We used, when I was here, we used to, we used to have kids who were called black hole kids, kids who took up so much time, not just by, from concerts, but everybody else in the school, and it means a lot of other kids who don't have the same specific needs and time needs, maybe won't get the services that they deserve. A, a social worker is gonna help to alleviate that to an extent. It's not gonna fix the problem, but it's gonna start to alleviate some of that stuff. Where you're not only trying to help the kid in the school, where you only have a limited amount of time, you're also trying to help the student with, you know, a home, with a home situation or whatever it is. It may be affected, he, her, in school. Uh, it's not a fantasy, it may be more than anything, but it's, it's something that's desperately needed.
Show me the floor and you're not going to do that. We hire, the proposal is to put a social worker at the Pembroke Academy. And the term is approximately forty-four percent correct. But if we put a social worker into the Pembroke system, it's not gonna become a project. So if it wasn't considering two provisions. One for which we would pay forty-four minutes, the other for which we would pay a hundred percent. Perhaps eliminate the crisis management component and allow the husband or husband to do the job that the division needs to help.
I'll be there.
I mean, it's, you spend, maybe by spending a little more, you get quality of service as opposed to really good intentions. funding one position, but not getting the results you want. And that, that has some negative impact in the community of ours. Maybe hiring a social worker, we have these expectations, and the expectations are not met because the person is overwhelmed. Then we just lose our money and that really solves the problem. With the two, we may be in a better position.
So with that, second, if they, here at PA, it wouldn't be district-wide?
Well, it sounds like, on what's so to say, that Pembroke Academy could utilize one full-time person and keep that person quite busy. And then perhaps a second from middle school and all matching school perfectly.
Including the key to the half.
I would say dedicated to the other two schools, some...
Some of them are more...
Yeah, it sounds like everybody could be quite busy. You know, it's not like we're getting three and saying, well, we have three. And maybe at one of the buildings, there's some opportunity to assist our boy. I don't think that would be the case.
I think too, just to bring up the speed and what happened last meeting, spirit and disposition. We're gonna spend the money, it's kind of where it hit home. That's kind of how we got to where we got, just so you know.
I don't have any idea what the, the, the near situ, near situation would be proposed. There's a two, two, certainly we'd do better than one. As much as I think that two would be great, I think, I, I prefer just to start with one.
My theory, that move one, we pay a hundred percent of that work.
We could provide the salary, we could, you know, have fifty percent of the salary paid by PA, which we could always contribute. Um, and whatever the, what ends up being, we could do that.
I'm just worried about, you know, jumping in that much to start, you know? Well, there's a lot of, there's several decisions we need to make at the moment. Where if Paul or any of the buildings have a position that, and up the timing out of that, we feel, uh, social worker may be a better fit, then while I can tag him, this is an issue we may not have to wrestle with money there. And I know we need cuts over the last seven years, so I don't know how many extra bodies are I kicking around, I'm sure none. But as we, as we get down through budget projects, December first, we're gonna find those answers out.
Just an replacement, uh, a new teacher as opposed to retired teacher. Even if you don't eliminate the position, just a replacement, you, you're bound to pay the money, sure. So I mean, the money may be available. I just, I just worried that, you know, our good intentions are not gonna get the results that are needed.
Like, we, we completely talked about, and then we looked at the numbers and said, let's start to connect work. So you decided to put something in the budget at this point, so we can see it now? Absolutely. One of those.
Two.
I, it's not gonna, I mean, the bottom line, the bottom line, that...
Just to speak with...
I'm starting with two. And, I mean, it lets you work, like, I, you know?
They won't be able to move on.
I do.
Fire that, yeah. Gee, you good? Two? Okay. That's all, gentlemen?
Tom, I'm gonna need a daddy. Take it out, we're on, right there.
I'll get the two as well. Okay?
Okay. Uh, the next bullet was math for children. I think it's been a little bit more about math tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to do that at the next meeting. Um, we did budget for our current math program, Go Math. It would be a substantial saving if we took that out. Uh, I can just tell you, we've been doing a lot of work with math, PB. We have already had teachers, I think we had Go Math five, five years. Um, and it is a, it is a program and it's costly. Um, teachers have still had to supplement it with other materials and add, um, free rivers. Ironically enough, what they were supplementing it with was the Eureka program that we've been looking at. So we've had other districts in our S A U highlighting Eureka. We have, um, get our toes a little bit into it. We, we did a math PB with grants, and we plan to continue to do that. If we remove the Go Math program, the only cost we could incur would be, um, photocopying costs for the materials. So Eureka is, um, much more user-friendly and cost-friendly. Uh, we would, we could literally remove the Go Math amount from the budget and wouldn't have to even add anything for, um, the paper and copy, uh, a pretty small cost.
The Eureka is basically being photocopied right now?
Yes, and that's allowed by a program. That's how they work.
Free program, it's based out of New York. Uh, and we're seeing quite a lot of success with it. A whole key to it, like any of these programs, is training. Uh, we have a tendency to say, let's buy a book, and that may make the teacher cheer now. Um, and that falls apart very quickly. Uh, you may have a core pe, a group of people you started five years ago, but as you go through a course of anything, you have turnover. So now you have people that they, they hired and now have that background. So one of, one of the things that we would have to be very cautious of is, uh, you don't do a one or two-day training. You, you train probably a year. Uh, you know, you get somebody to come in, work with you, six weeks later they come back, six weeks later they come back again. Um, so that you can really, uh, make sure you're using the real programs as a reality. Um, and then frankly, I think that's what happens when you're back, lack of training. We've been kind of backing into this issue cautiously over the last couple of years, um, about the fact that our math program currently is not where we want it to be. And just trying to get to the root of the problem without spending small portion on new programs. It, it sounds like it's caught watching the downforce, but I agree with John saying, I think we're gonna have to have a future conversation about supporting this math program, uh, financials and training.
Program itself, how long has it been around? Have other districts and other states given this, what it's, that's...
Yeah, I mean, re- results are good. Uh, actually, frankly, Chris Matika is the one that, um, really is, um, is some of the driving force behind it. We've done workshops with somebody, uh, currently that knows Eureka Math very well. Um, and it hasn't been really new Eureka Math, but just methods of teaching math. The, the chief work that I'm both have been, have been positively also that. The savings is striking. To give you an example, I got a call for one year, my school for next year for Go Math. It was, uh, twelve thousand, some odd dollars for one year. The Hill School, I think, was fourteen thousand dollars for one year. Between the two buildings, we're looking at twenty-six thousand dollars for one year of Go Math. That, that kind of has a tendency to make you look elsewhere.
What if there was a Go Math? Because obviously, when we, at, you know, when we agreed to allocate the funds for it, the expectation was that this would be really, you know, a strong program, it was gonna get some of the impact on, um, on math scores. And if five years later, that's not happening...
Well, not completely, not completely. And I, you know, I don't have any, but I'm making sure that our sixth and seventh grade scores have consistently gone up. Um, and, and Go Math, sixth grade really changes into a middle school program.
Uh-huh.
Um, and we're beginning to see, uh, last year, I believe, in, in seventh grade, we had, uh, completely closed. It was over sixty percent of the provision, or better.
Uh-huh.
That's a number we're pretty proud of.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, um, part of the issue is that Go Math, uh, really designed for a much longer block. Um, and we are able to really, uh, pull off, so we've had to modify it. It's forty-four minutes versus an eighty-minute block. Um, and not unlike other types of, uh, whether software or anything like that, it begins to go old. And if they don't continually upkeep it and maintain it, it begins to lose the, you know, it's like, like work, you know? I, I think if I'm building a, you know, two thousand, two thousand second word, you know, it doesn't have, generally the same change as it, what's out there now. So that's part of, of what we, what we call...
So it's not just, it's not that when we agreed to support Go Math, that it was flawed. It's that it has not, um, been updated as much as it should be.
Especially we would like.
Not designed for, for length and power.
There are components that I like a lot, history level staff and work phone, and the, kind of, high, it's all, they come out of the same, um, book. It's absolutely like that, part of it. But, um, my math, uh, group is pretty stable, and so they've gotten pretty used to that, and so they know how to do that in conjunction with, uh, Eureka. What I, what I have found, uh, and this is true for, and we're picking on math right now a little bit, but with so many resources out there, and even, it's a big difference from five years ago. You can go in, you can see, stop teaching, they're coming out, but even if we go to Eureka, we, you know, uh, if you go on math teachers, some of the stuff they found is free online, is wonderful. It's really great for, uh, so I wanted to be able to allow them to do that. Uh, it's great, it's, uh, quite a lot of work. I mean, that's, you know, and training, but I can't say enough about, we need somebody to really teach, teach, teach that.
Would the training cost be comparable to what we received for life in the same school or Go Math?
Where has that been coming from?
We, we've been lucky enough to buy and grant funding for the training.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we've had, um, I think our Title Q Grant, our PB Grant, um, we were able to get quite a few days from our consultant. And, and then we've got some days planned out for next year as well. You know, it's, it's like we're getting, we don't get the grant funding in the future. We probably would be back here, um, putting money in the budget, because I think that, like we said, that's been the downfall. You have to have someone training teachers, not even take one math, nothing to class. Um, and then, you know, go off and be a mathematician and keep teaching math without ongoing PD. We won't be your school.
One of the positions we lost, remember, was a math coach in the Free Rivers. And, uh, that's, that's significant. Um, you know, we have the reading writing specialists, but, you know, and it is district-wide, you know, we have a tendency to take that. I don't know why, but that math seems to be not as much a focus as it should be. And you, you can feel it. Um, the teacher's unbelievable, there's so much time in front of the train, but they have somebody to come in, there's a woman that came in for a lesson with them, then actually goes into the classroom and works with them in the classroom. It shows them, it demonstrates with kids, goes real life stuff inside, you know, sort of in front of the screen. Uh, you can try this, well, let's put a kid there and see what it'll look like. And that, that changes, that's what makes it change. Frankly, not a book that gives you readings and, okay, each other one. That's long gone now. My opinion, thankfully. So is your current position to go to the, at this point in time, when you start weighing everything else again? And then, right, this is a little...
Great, that's... Um, and does Go Math encompass eighth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you would just mention that, and I was talking to Hill School, but I didn't know that at some point.
There is, there is across the board, uh, this is an interesting thing that I'm still trying to research. When you see scores maybe drop across the board in eighth grade. There's one theory behind it, I'm not much, you're lucky, uh, but there is a lot of theories behind that.
Across the board.
Oh, there's a lot of theories, yes.
Yep.
So, any questions, guys?
It's free, it's your name.
Well, it's also legitimate program. We got, we've studied and, 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 like I said, Chris Matika is the one, and he would be able to, uh, give you a lot more information on the background and the history of it, uh, and what it's being used. They also probably engage, engage in New York. Um, so there's a couple, that's what I would use that for, I think, I think. I mean, you know, it's all online, staff come in, they're sharing it, there's so much more to share of the information nowadays, it's really, really nice, I think, though.
So ironically, we're just coming to you to approve, uh, buying program. We're, we felt like we need to be transparent, hey, we're actually taking the program out. So that's what we'd like to do for the next budget, is call them, Go Math.
You don't want to...
No, we just want to make sure that...
It's all good? This budget, this budget reflects, for twenty-five, twenty-six, twelve, twenty-seven?
Okay.
All right? Good? Technology, I think this was tied into the trust fund, because how we're gonna fund something that...
Yeah, we had quite a...
There was a, there was a, technology cost in this budget that I figured I needed. But it worked quite good, and I think we wanna have that technology discussion in trust. But you wanna have somebody kind of pushing them on to see if they're something that's ever, that will...
Yeah. So you, could you give us some direction on the one to start? Do you wanna see what it would look like to take out the technology replacement cycle and put that into the technology trust fund? Or do you want, what do you want the, the...
I would recommend that.
That needs to pop in what is, what you're... Pop it out, that's, maybe, if you do a little, I don't have my own, but, yeah. Very comprehensive.
We're gonna pick it up and make sure you get a copy.
Thank you. It's pretty comprehensive, and it was, it was also, it was a great need to use something.
Yeah, great, you do something, and you're very comprehensive, and obviously, you had a quite bad, it was, um.
We should look at it the same way we look at the trust, you know, you can.
Yeah, historically, we've been, it's sort of been, you know, okay, we were putting for thirty thousand on technology, we have to find cut and take half of that out. And now we're finding, without that constant replacement cycle, replacing twenty percent of our technology, it's gonna just become more expensive, um, because we're replacing more than we can be ourselves.
I think the idea would be to try to get that, uh, speaking of Three Rivers, we are, uh, pretty much at a point where we just need to replace. We don't need to add. So it'd be nice to have a budget, so it was pretty much space black. Um, the problem is, and the only thing I would ask you to think about is using the trust for those infrastructure things. Um, 'cause that's what fluctuates so much, that, you know, we might get in with a twenty-five thousand dollar surgery three years. Um, and so if that was in the trust, we wouldn't have to then inflate budget for one year. Uh, you know, or just the wifi, or just the switches, uh, all the cables, all that stuff that, uh, she's, without it, we, we, you know, our, our credit's always the lights more.
Yeah, I think the original thought that technology trust would use that logic, I don't think it's a ton of money.
I was just gonna tell you, uh, I think forty thousand.
We're not talking ton of money.
No.
So we, I think we'd be putting money in and taking.
But the last servers, there's some wire related, that we're getting matching funds for wire.
Three, okay, good.
But we do, and they don't care what the P D rate, I mean, they, they.
No, I mean, that's, that's on the way, one of the ones that misses it, maybe the last year.
I, I really, I did it, if nothing else, we can trust fund money to cover the other half of Eureka, whatever Eureka is. Should we don't want to lose, I mean, that's just all the trust, we're losing that kind of money.
Because like you said, otherwise we'd stay on the stack.
Right, so you have to do it.
Right.
All right, so you gotta, we're gonna have to take it on a, we can have a really technology weighted news, or I would, you know, at some point in the next, the bottom line budget would obviously, that's something, the conversation, you know, that you all will come forward with. You can hold off on that, because we're waiting for the numbers from Josh to come, that's a good time.
I can always.
The modular.
So he takes me up the tractor and putting the modulars, so like.
That might be washed, that's pretty close. Yeah, that would be supposed to wash the modulars by, in twenty-five, seventy-five a month, so multiply that by eleven, and that's the number you're gonna be looking at. So is there anything else, Art, Ben?
Do you want to go through the change in the name of the name?
Do you want your first change, does it actually need a month?
It's on time. Um, line, I don't have the pamphlet in front of me, so if you can give me the copy, uh, column number, so line number eighteen in the budget, you'll see an increase of forty-four thousand four hundred and seven. Um, we were disinformed, we had been, because of the gap in our, um, math scores, we had been identified as a focus school. We've spent over several years, we've been working on putting support in place at PA, um, to lessen that gap. We were informed that we would be losing that grant funding, um, so only the lowest ten percent performing school from the state will be getting funding. Um, others would just be getting P D. So that was about seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we are losing. Um, the two years, the two people in the two-year salary line that we have added here, um, we would be moving funding to those positions. So we've added that into the budget.
But it's one of those magic conditions of the budget that you can ask us about, how we're delivering positions that we had granted to our company. So it's gonna be one of those.
There's a few places in this budget that we've like that, lost the grant funding, we'll, we'll go to that. Um, the next one's actually the same thing, uh, line forty-two, we have been funding our entire summer program at Timber Academy because that grant, we've lost that. Um, so that's fifteen thousand seven hundred and seven.
Now, plenty of weeks, according to that, no longer is it listed, or we have no longer published.
We have not received eligibility to determine whether or not we're still on the list, that list. Um, it's, whether we are or not, that grant is gone. So there's no more funding. It, I think it's several flow groups, based on, you know, I have, yeah.
Well, what about the summer program?
Say that was the same grant, so it was seventy-five thousand dollar grant, I was gonna, sorry, um, several lines, yeah.
Really, really quickly, tell me what, summer program, the F, P Y L, which is P Y L, I think.
Yeah.
Um, line two fifty-four, and two seventy-two, pretty simple, uh, we took out the dollar. We're, we're trying to get rid of all the A B lines, we don't need them anymore, you know, the dollar in there, we need to gear that out. We gave the two dollars. And we're putting the yellow highlight. So line one oh one, three, four and five, that'd be there.
Uh, three seventeen, line one oh, one, one, zero, one, wait.
Ten thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Um, we've added thirty-five hundred dollars. We have, um, been improving on our integrator at Timber Academy to do the recording for these meetings. And it's taken a great number of hours, um, we really need to tighten that job out. Um, so for next year, we're planning on doing, um, a special for that. And then we've also added money for, um, what we did with meetings, the auditorium, we need to hire someone to be found. So for the both the gym and the gym, um, we have a design system, and we need to have someone come do a map for us, whatever it is. I don't see, I think it will be a few, um, problems with that.
And we, we need to, we have another one, we need to handle making more of this, um, on these ones.
Of what the change was?
Yeah.
Sure.
Good job, and what is it?
Okay. Okay. Uh, line one one four one, other time given, we added money, um, I think about five thousand dollars to the actual P Y L salaries. It's in the list in the notes. Um, again, that was five thousand dollars that we dedicated to that for night. Line twelve forty-one, thirty-four and one six. Hattori O'Fallon, um, there is already a representation of a position cut from the merger. Um, and we've also moved people around a little bit between buildings, we'll just make a change in there.
So this million dollar change is more of a shuffle?
Yeah, I think so.
There's, I don't know if that happened, if she got in there, when I looked at it, it was reflective of the full-time position was not in there.
Okay.
Uh, so I can't confirm, there is a part of the position active.
Um, line fourteen ninety-five, the good news for the night, uh, your health insurance cost went down four percent. Wow. So, yeah, we had, um, an increase of five percent in there, and we got the rates today, so Amber adjusted that. All of the district. Um, the, the rest of it at the bottom of that page as well, to be able to highlight it, but that's the fringe of what are associated, and you kind of change salaries for life insurance, dental, fight out. And when that on the next page. And I think that will be it.
So the current budget, it was a four hundred eighty thousand dollar increase. Plus the, the balance, a hundred and fifty thousand, um, plus the cuts to, I don't know, according to that. Um, so just from a political standpoint, I don't know how. But it is one of the, I mean, if you wanna provide an opinion, wanna hold off? We'll talk about it later. I think that's it. That's, we've got a score to run, we're, yeah, boy.
This is true, and I think if I'm reading this correctly, it's a totally common one, increase. A hot second under a two percent increase. After going black and all of the cuts that we made last year, this is a very, very, um.
Yeah, I, I personally don't, the issue just had, I wasn't going up. I said, from a political standpoint, what you're gonna hear is, you're closing your store, you're cutting your salaries, you've got a declining population, and you're going up four hundred eighty thousand dollars on the bottom line here, plus the money you save, so you're actually going to order that. That's the argument you're gonna, you're gonna hear, you see me prepared for that.
You could have a ten percent decrease in the one of these, okay, that's not enough.
I, I, I'm not denying it, Ben, I agree with you, I'm just playing devil's advocate, that's all.
No, I.
It's still, you know, the, the budget's still going up. If it went up, if it went up, that hundred seventy-five proposing diligent, that's all it was, you'd still get pushback on. So, you know, to see this, it's gonna be, actually.